Hey, well, welcome. I'm Megan Caffrey. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department and I want to welcome you to the planning commission meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person and it is on Zoom as well, and we are recording. For those bringing us to Zoom, please remember to use your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to use your phone or device, you may need to use. Tonight is a public hearing on the Flatwoods SubArea Plan. And then for those on Zoom, also a reminder that the chat feature is modified so that participants may report some difficult things directly to myself. No public comments or questions will be taken through the chat feature. So we'll start with a call. And all of our planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Alves, Commissioner Corbin, Commissioner Frith, and Commissioner Chastain. Commissioner Foster is absent tonight. And so with six planning commissioners, we do have a call. And we are now ready to begin. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Laurie Spogen, and I'd like to call the order, the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for the day and the agenda is displayed or no? No, no, okay, we have the agenda. And so I'd like to entertain a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I approve. Your agenda is presented.
I second it. Okay, and let's vote on that. Let's verbally vote. Starting down at the far end there. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. The process was successful.
Okay. Also, prior to tonight, we've received the meeting notes from the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second to adopt the minutes.
Madam Chair, I have a question. In one of the paragraphs, it starts off with the name Corbin. But I'm unsure as to if it was supposed to have been directed to Commissioner Corbin Foster or Frank Corbin. I thought that it would be worth notating.
Do you have a paragraph or place in the notes that that's noted?
I can find it real quick if we have a copy of the notes here. I read it when I received it. I don't have that. Okay, we don't have a copy. You know, we could move to, in my opinion, we could move to approve with that proposed change and it could be identified later if that's okay with the board. I will propose, I will make a motion to approve the minutes with the following proposed change. There is a paragraph that starts with the name Corbin, but it doesn't specify whether it's Corbin Foster or Frank Corbin. So I would like to have that specified and corrected.
Thank you. Second.
I'll say your name.
Okay, vote.
Aye, aye.
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 Aye. The process was successful.
Excellent. So.
It's working.
I don't believe we have any commissioners on Zoom tonight. So are there any members of the public that would like to provide comment? And these comments don't have anything to do with the Flatwoods SubArea Plan, just if they have a comment on something else. Now's the time to do it. Do we have anybody?
I don't see anybody on Zoom, and we didn't have anybody sign up in person.
Okay. Then I'll now open the public hearing on the Flatwoods SubArea Plan. This public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion. I can tell that's been a bit of that. And we'd like to start with a few specific questions and then a staff presentation followed by questions from the commissioners. And finally, we'll take public testimony. If there's anybody in the audience who believes that the public was not notified in a timely manner, please step up to the desk or raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, I'm not seeing many. Then I'm going to, is there anybody on the commission that has a disclosure to me other than myself? Okay, and I'm, if mine's a simple one, I've got a nephew that is going to be maybe giving testimony today. And I have nothing, no interest in his business and I can be impartial. So now I'm going to turn it over to the staff.
Thank you. All right, Minnie Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner and the Project Manager for the SubArea Plan. I do want to say just a few words before we hear from the public. First, the testimony in front of you guys. So there's a binder clip of testimony. The first smaller set with the paper clip is new. So that came in either later last night or this morning. And then underneath it is what you guys already received, but we wanted to print it out since we don't have our normal laptops in front of everybody. So you have all your testimony in front of you. Second, we sent a staff report on March third. It had some take home messages. I'd like to just go over those for everybody really quick. So you did see these before, but I want to go ahead and read them again, just so we remember sort of the big, big points of the SubArea Plan. So first, the SubArea Plan does not drive growth. It manages growth. Development is already occurring. It's been occurring in Flatwood for quite a while. This is because the existing zoning is small town mixed use for most of Flatwood, and that allows a lot of development, commercial, residential, lots of stuff. It's also because tourism has increased significantly since twenty nineteen. And then once we get sewer and sewer is coming, there's a big chunk of money that's already starting on the engineering and we're asking for more. Once sewer is here, then multifamily is already allowed in downtown where there's sewer. So with or without the plan, that's all going to happen. So the point of the plan is to control it, manage it, and direct it. Point number two, people who live and work in town need to be able to afford housing in town. The price of a single family residence has gone up about three hundred percent in Flatwood since two thousand twelve. Price of a single family residence is not likely to come down. Probably going to stay up there. What is needed are other housing options that are more affordable, such as duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, row houses, ADUs, apartments, and bunkhouses. The plan will result in new guidance that will allow housing options and focus that higher density in the downtown area where there is sewer. This will preserve the outer areas as rural. Third point. Jobs, housing, and quality education are needed for families to live in Flatwood. When the mail-in ranger station closed, good paying jobs left and so families, then the school closed, about a thousand people left town. In order to retain the families that are here, to bring families back to town, there needs to be jobs that pay living wage and affordable housing options and educational opportunities. The plan includes goals to improve the local economy and create jobs as well as support continuing education. Fourth point. Services are needed to allow people to age in place. Flatwood has a lot of residents that are over sixty to continue to live in Flatwood. People need services like doctor's offices, pharmacies, affordable grocery, banking. Driving long distances to get those services becomes less safe and feasible as we age. The plan encourages new supportive services to be located in Flatwood. Fifth point, the local economy is now based on tourism. That is the primary economy here in Flatwood now with the closure of the mail-in station. There is no need to attract more people to Flatwood. The tourists are already here. We don't need to bring more people here. What we need to do is when the tourists are here, we need them to spend money here. Right? I mean, literally like turn them upside down and shake their change out. They need to spend money here at the restaurants and shops that are local to the town. However, other jobs are also needed, right? So the businesses that are here, the houses are here, they need electricians, plumbers, roofers, carpenters. Anybody in this room can tell you if you go on Packard Information Group any time of the week, there's a question. Does anybody have a good plumber I can use? So there's a lot of jobs needed here. Point number six, this is the last point, Highway twelve is not safe and it needs improvements. The state highway needs many improvements to make it safe, including traffic calming, designated on-street parking, lighting, and crosswalks. The improvements need to address peak tourism, but the improvements also need to address local access. The plan includes concepts for Highway twelve that are supported by WashDOT. The plan does not include what should be done exactly. It's the policies that traffic calming is needed and pedestrian safety is needed. It's not what the fixes are that comes in phase two. The last thing I wanted to address was in the staff report as well. There was a question from the commissioners regarding if Flatwood should incorporate as a city. In order for a place like Flatwood to incorporate, two things need to be in place. So first, there has to be an urban growth area placed around the jurisdiction. And second, the population within that area needs to be fifteen hundred residents. Flatwood has neither of those two to value. One of the potential implementation tools that we will be considering during Phase Two is to place an urban growth area, UGA boundary, on part of the SubArea Plan. We'll be discussing that in Phase Two, not now. And in the future, if the population inside of a UGA reaches fifteen hundred residents, then Flatwood could consider incorporation. So it's a ways out there. I'm ready for that. Those are my talking parts. Any questions from the commissioners?
Okay, if there are no questions, then we'll open oral testimony. Staff, would you like your opening remarks and presentation to be added to the testimony?
Yes, please.
Okay, so before we begin, I'd like to remind everybody to be respectful. It's hard to come up and talk in front of everybody, so try and not try and resist booing or clapping or anything that would make them nervous to be talking. And the testimony will begin with those who signed up in advance on the webpage. And then we'll call on those who signed up at the table and then anybody who's on Zoom. Each person will have three minutes. And once you begin speaking, Megan will start the timer. And if you go over three minutes, Megan's going to wrap on the table. When you begin your testimony, you are required to state your full name and mailing address for the record. And speak, speak clearly so maybe you can get that. And also, if you'd like to donate your time to another person, you can, but you can only donate three minutes. So nobody can talk more than six minutes at a time. You can't donate one minute or two, just three. And if you wish to donate, when the person is called up to testify, you stand up, state your name, and that you wish to donate your time. Okay, Megan?
I will call on you one at a time. We'll start with those who signed up in advance and then I'll call the names that are on the sign-in sheet that you guys wrote down when you came in. And then we'll end with anybody on Zoom. For those who are on Zoom, if you can use the razor fan feature or send me a chat, we'll call on you to get there. And then just as a reminder, please begin your testimony with your full name and your threats. And everyone else in the room, please remember to stay quiet as our speaker picks up all the noise in the background. So we will begin with Teresa Ben.
My name is Teresa Ben, and I live at one twenty-six Tideway Lane in Flatwood. Thank you to everyone for coming tonight, especially commissioners for coming out to our beautiful town. I'm here to express my full support for the Flatwood SubArea Plan and strongly urge you to adopt it. We purchased in Flatwood in two thousand thirteen, and by two thousand eighteen, my son and grandson and I were living here full-time. When this process started, I had a different idea about what was important to happen in Flatwood for the future. Over a year later, after attending all of our meetings and all of the housing forums, I support the plan because I believe it represents what the majority of the community wants. Growth isn't coming to Flatwood. It's already huge, and we are being overrun by it. This plan will help us manage what we cannot control. Long-term housing is very limited in Flatwood, and affordable housing is non-existent. Over seventy percent of the dwellings in Flatwood are owned by people who live elsewhere and are not York constituents. We have all, we all have stories to tell where an employee of a local business lost their long-term housing situation because the house sold or was turned into a short-term rental. If we don't solve the housing crisis in Flatwood, we will lose the workers who serve the locals and the hundreds of thousands of tourists who come through Flatwood in the recent seasons. As a full-time resident, the safety of Highway twelve through the heart of downtown Flatwood concerns me. I live close enough to walk to town, but I don't because semi-trucks whiz by going more than forty-five miles an hour. If we don't have traffic calming and a slower speed limit, it's never going to change. And if we did have traffic calming, it would only affect less than a mile of the heart of Flatwood. It's not going to turn Flatwood into Deadwood, South Dakota. Providing Flatwood with a plan for the future will help guide us as we struggle to find balance between the residents and the tourists. Tourism is the only industry keeping Flatwood alive, but it's eating us alive at the same time. Without services like garbage and sewer, residents, local businesses, and local charities are left to deal with the messier aspects of tourism at their own cost. Without more focus on infrastructure, the businesses necessary to support residents and a large volume of tourists, they will not come to Flatwood. We need businesses that serve the community and provide living wage jobs. Flatwood should be a community where residents of all ages live, work, and thrive. Flatwood is a gateway community, a gateway to natural amenities and resources. And gateway communities around the world are struggling with the same issues that Flatwood's struggling with right now. We don't want to become an Aston, Colorado. This plan will put us on the path to finding Flatwood solutions for Flatwood problems. I'm not only representing myself tonight, I'm representing my family, and I'm also representing an affordable housing nonprofit that we have started here in Flatwood called Movable Flatwood. And you have a lot of support in your path from them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mari Lurchin. I live at one thirty-five Two Backstreet. I go to the airport. I've been in Flatwood for forty-five years, a little bit more. I am urging you as an individual and resident to pass the plan that has been presented to you. I served on the draft committee, and I can assure you that our efforts were thorough, thoughtful, and balanced. We had many very lengthy, serious discussions. I am a business owner and a community activist volunteer for most of my time in Flatwood. I have lived firsthand the evolution from a timber-based to a tourist-based economy here. So believe me, it hasn't been an easy journey and it's still a challenging situation. The plan will give the county and the community the opportunity for successful managing growth, maintaining our small-town lifestyle, and encouraging economic prosperity. Recent progress in planning for infrastructure improvements makes it even more crucial to have a long-range plan for our vision of the community. While all other elements of the plan are important, for me personally, the following elements are priorities. Managing growth to maintain our rural lifestyle, affordable housing for employees, even with tourism-related activities, and infrastructure to allow comfortably aging in place. And from my perspective, recently this last year, this is very personal and very, very important. It's not an easy place to age in. I want to thank you all for your thoughtful consideration and evaluation of the plan and its approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am also speaking on, I will begin it all in three minutes. As the president of the White Pass Senior Highway Organization, which is about sixteen years old now, I also want to provide testimony provided by your board. They've been very active in the board. The board is totally in support of the Flatwood SubArea Plan. The organization recognizes the importance of planning for growth in Flatwood in rural areas impacted by outdoor recreation activities. The need for managed growth is critical for the maintenance of the local community identity and the opportunity for an improved business environment. Several of our board members served on the draft committee and again can attest to its thorough and thoughtful process. We, as the Highway, have pledged support for the proposed Flatwood Corridor Plan grant that Minnie's working on and the county is hoping to get. We continue to support businesses in the area with maps and online travel services. Especially important to our stakeholders is the issue of affordable housing for local employees, more necessary to support a robust tourism economy. The ability to instruct multifamily units in the community would help that ever tremendously. And the board sends its thanks for your consideration and approval.
Good evening to all the commissioners, and my name is Gina Owen. I live at six four seven Silverbrook Road in Randall, Washington, the next town over, for those of you who don't know. But I want to strongly express my support for this plan. I've worked with this group for the last year, and I can tell you that they are very thoughtful, dedicated, committed people who have put a lot of thought and effort into this. I am a resident of Randall, having moved here seven years ago with my husband when we retired. We are very connected to East Lewis County as residents, family business owners, active community participants, and recreators. Our family members own the Flatwood Station in Flatwood, just over here, as well as Rain Tree Nursery in Morton. They have worked, these family members have worked very hard to grow these businesses and contribute to a vibrant business community. In addition, we are very active volunteers for the community as board members of Pinchot Partners Cooperative, Lewis County Water Conservancy Board, members of Skate Creek Park, the Gifford Pinchot Trash Course, and many other activities. We're committed to this community. We feel very optimistic about its future as well. We are in support of the Flatwood SubArea Plan for the following reasons. Growth is happening in Flatwood and all of East Lewis County. This is an incredibly beautiful part of the country with easy access, as you know, to the park, the ski pass, endless hiking, fishing, biking, and hunting. Flatwood is emerging from the economic malaise of the last thirty years, and rapid expansion is here. How that expansion and growth is managed is a central question, not whether or not growth should be allowed. Growth is happening, and with the sewer system projects, when we begin, it will only accelerate. As I see it, growth can be either ignored and it occurs in a half-hundred and unthoughtful way, or it can be carefully managed and planned, which is what I believe this first area, the SubArea Plan, has done. First and foremost, the plan addresses the small-town mixed-use zoning that is resulting in this app has a growth.
Thank you.
It calls for more varied zoning that will allow for better housing options, businesses, and future planning for plant expansions. As family business owners in Flatwood, one of the most difficult issues was affordable housing. The current zoning prevents options for more affordable housing with multifamily housing, ADUs, bunkhouses, et cetera, that can meet present and future needs for citizens of Flatwood. And the business owners are having difficulty hiring due to lack of affordable housing. The family members from Flatwood, I mean, they have.
I just backed up.
Okay.
I heard you just.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, Flatwood Station has a bunkhouse, and I can't tell you how many businesses and the park and the ski resort and the Forest Service. And everybody is coming saying, can we put our employees there? We have no place to put them. The Forest Service is trying to hire hundreds of people. They cannot house them anywhere. So nobody comes. Nobody comes, and the economic development is just stagnant.
That's true.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Close facts.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Next is John Anderson.
John Anderson, J O N. I live here next door to Mari, actually, one forty-one Two Backstreet, over by the airport. I haven't really been involved in the planning process. But I would like to thank everyone who contributed. It's been a big effort. And I think they've done a fine job, and I'm definitely in agreement. Sewer in the area here is going to be a pretty small part of the area. I install septic systems throughout the area. And one of the issues that I have with trying to make more housing is ADUs on quarter acre lots. Not against ADUs, but on the small lots in the outline areas, basically. You really run out of room for septic in the future. The systems today last a lot longer than in the past, but septic systems aren't a permanent solution. They're doing with a backup area for a grain field. And when a guy gets a cabin and a garage and has an ADU, we're kind of out of room to try to find a fit for a grain field or a very expensive setup. Like I say, I'm in favor of the plan that's been put forth, and I appreciate everyone's effort, and thank you folks for coming up to Flatwood.
Thank you.
I am Tracy Trumpa, and I'm a real estate agent here, and I own historic Hotel Flatwood. And used to own Flatwood Station, so I echo the need for housing and all the new approaches that we had for the bunkhouse and whatnot. But also, as a real estate agent, I just want to say we need this plan in terms of figuring out some multifamily housing and some things for low-income people. So you've heard that a lot. But one of the things that I wanted to say about this is just that it was such a privilege to be able to come together with people in the community again to talk about what our needs are. And some of the policies that are in here, I think, do just kind of point the commissioners that don't live here when they're creating laws, zoning rules, things like that around here, to see some of our values. Because when we came together, we talked about supporting those locally owned businesses, and they're leaving us more and more. And so we really do want to have that kind of thing come back more because we've had a lovely community, but we're losing some of that with all of the influx of purchase from the outside. And I see that a lot with real estate. A lot of the clients that I have who are coming wanting to buy here don't live here. And so any kind of focus that we can have on local ownership, I think is great in our business core. I also send out the emails and run the meetings for the local Business Owner Council. And so I see that it's tricky. We've lost a lot of our folks. I mean, I'll let Matt here use to run it and be you know, retiring, and Dean and I are retiring soon, and Mari is retiring. So we need to find ways for young people to come in and have the meeting here. So that's part of this plan that I agree with support and I guess that's the most important part of it.
Thank you.
Oh, hi, Adam. Thank you. One oh six, please, sir.
Hello, my name is Greg Arpold. I live at six fifty-six Cannon Road. A resident of Flatwood for forty-two years. And had the fortune to buy one of the nicest pieces of property in Flatwood with half a mile of riverfront. Over the years, I had worked as a wildland firefighter, take jobs in the last to be able to pay for this property. And now that I'm retired, I fully support this plan because we need some type of growth management in this area. You know, I've been here to see the rise and fall of Flatwood from glory days of logging through the crash of the timber market, of the environmental protections, everything show basically shutting down and losing all the employees in Flatwood. But what I really want to address tonight is the housing and particularly HS one point six, which in our plan supports options to alleviate cost burden to those on taste impact. Well, with the rise of property values, often comes the rise of property taxes. I'm finding myself in a position, I'm paying now more per month in property taxes than I paid for my mortgage when I bought this property. So I think we need to look at income eligibility for seniors to get a tax break. That hasn't changed in quite a lot, whereas inflation's been three percent a year. That metric for qualifying for tax breaks hasn't changed. So in my opinion, short-term rules are a leading cause of some of the problems we're having in this town. I truly believe that they need to be taxed in a different way since they're a business than people that are permanent full-time residents. Because these taxes have been dry, and a lot of people, they've been kind of out of this one. Because these taxes have been dry and a lot of people, they've been coming out of this farm. So thank you. I appreciate you listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
David Fletchstein.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Dave Fletchstein. I live at one oh nine Fletch Lane. My wife Laura. We both served on the plan that we're talking about this evening. I want to say that I fully support the plan. A lot of thoughtful work went into what everybody said. I echo everyone's comments. My comments are germane to the airport in particular. Uh prior to retiring in December of this year, I served as the Director of Radiation for the State of Washington. Um as part of that, we provided funding, expertise and um assistance through the hundred and thirty-two public use airports across our state. And we saw challenges with the smaller airports across the state. Many of those challenges that we saw were viewed to what we call incompatible landings. So when land is land around airports is generally protected um because of incompatible uses such as homes, um things that would interfere with airport operations or that would interfere with the long term viability of an airport to continue to expand and use as visited was intended. So my only my only comment is um as we look to increase density around the airport, you need to be very thoughtful of that given the long term viability of the airport. When you put people in close proximity to the airports, you subject them to the noise, the emissions, etc. And as ownership changes uh between landowners, some of those new landowners may not appreciate that airport. So um there could be pressure in the future for that airport to do something other than it's doing now. And this summer proved to everyone how viable that airport is or how essential it is for the community as responders age there um helping save the homes um surrounding the Packwood area. So those are my comments. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, it was really good timing. Because I think this directly relates to what David just shared. So um my mailing address is P O Box sixty-six, nine oh Washington, ninety-five eight nine. Um my name is Skylar Dorvinson. I am the owner of the eleven acre property on Huntington Road near the airport. Uh that is the Victoria Huntington. Um I'm asking the committee to consider changing the zoning designation from commercial to low density residential. So I've been speaking to many about this and it's my understanding that the the C A C considers residential to be incompatible use near airports, but in the same. Um and C B Z zoning was recommended because it was a do no harm designation that doesn't allow more housing than today. When the planning commission selected the C N C zoning for the Huntington property, I think it was the best choice in light of the C A C's recommendations. However, we've noticed that the um definition of the C N C zoning has changed as um the subarea plan has um gone through this process. So the definition read residential uses should be discouraged and buffered from industrial uses on the original plan. Uh but it now reads high density residential uses eighteen to thirty units per acre should be allowed and buffered from commercial or manufacturing uses. And just to be clear, um my property is in um it's it's being expected to be commercial, so. Um so high density residential does not seem to fit with the recommendation of the C A C. So I would like to submit to the committee that the C N C zoning is no longer the best designation um to support the recommendation of the C A C. Uh if if the committee is supporting a do no harm designation that doesn't allow more housing than is allowed today, they should pick the designation that is most in line with the current S D M U zoning. Um and that would be low density residential zoning. That's all I got.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Uh I'll I'll try and speak to that microphone. Uh my name is Kathy Mobianthal. My mailing address is P O Box one seven four in Packwood. I didn't really prepare anything to say, but I just wanted to echo some of the things. I I think the plan is a good one for the most part, but I want to echo that the short term housing, I believe, is really really hurting Packwood. Um I am a long term renter and I am just like one landlord's decision away from homelessness, housing crisis. And I don't foresee that happening, but and I also kind of counterintuitive to what everybody who knows this business seems to be the right thing. I don't like the idea of high density residential in the downtown area. I think it's um just adds to the congestion. I thought, oh, this is a very beautiful day for the planning commission to come to Packwood, but it is a quiet day. You are not seeing at all what the congestion is in the summer. It's just something really needs to be done about the downtown. It's just, it's dangerous for cars and pedestrians. I really supported the work Wendy's done with the P O T and trying to, we need something to be done there and um parking, yeah, I mean, it just, I don't know, it just seems like, I know that's where the sewer will be. But one of the things I wrote in my written testimony is there's already, you know, like these short term rentals, you know, sleeps eight, but they don't have, you know, and a four flex would probably sleep less than eight. Yet they require sewer and this short term rental doesn't. You know, night after night, they could be running eight people and, you know, on just one second. But so I don't know what the solution is necessarily, but I I don't, I don't, you know, we've already got high density in um Timberline, High Valley, even it seems to me like it's high density, this new area down on Skate Creek Road. But I don't think it's technically high density, which is, you know, a really a difference in perspective too of people who've lived there a long time. The quiet lifestyle, the less dense and then yeah. So why not have apartment or um more dense housing maybe on the out, not right in town in the very core where, I mean, I say yes, let the businesses develop, but not high density housing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Quarter. Um P O Box eight seventy. I have been a resident in the valley for about fifteen years on and off. Mari was my landlord for many years. Always when I rented, I rented a home that belonged to either a summer or a winter um owner of the home. We had winter people, we had summer people. I worked at the coffee shop, then remember it's Butter View, now Mountain Goat. I'm back with coffee shop. In that ten year period, things have changed drastically, obviously. That being said, in the last two years, the over, well, price and value becoming absolutely ridiculously not anywhere in the ballpark for another. And I I didn't, I don't know what I was saying. My point being is there was not a housing crisis in Packwood up until a couple of years ago. You had people who very willingly rented their homes for six months at a time, so your seasonal worker had a place to live. They were either winter people or summer people. Summer people rented to winter people and vice versa. My question is, what are you gonna do in the next two years until you get a sewer system when we can have higher density? I worked at the coffee shop. We closed the shop, coffee shop the other day because we had an elevator and no one to build the spot. We can't run at the capacity we are asked to run at in these small businesses with the number of people that run into town. We are also getting people in town who don't know why they're here. They get here, they don't have wifi. That was entertaining. Does anybody get to that? In a moment. Cause their iPad didn't work. So that being said, what are you gonna do in the next two years? How are you gonna sustain this town for the tons of people that are parading into it? And we, our EMS can't handle it. Yeah, we have a response time of five to ten minutes. That means somebody's gonna stand around you and tell you, we're gonna try and get you somewhere before you bleed out. Or they're gonna call the helicopter. That doesn't mean we have a response time of a trainee and we have trainee and cheese. My point being, this town is not set up to the capacity that it's trying to handle. And I don't see in the next two years that we're gonna be able to maintain what we're doing to the point where people are gonna come here in three years because we have sewer. So I guess that's my question. What are we gonna do in the next year? How are you gonna maintain the businesses that are here? Uh and my guess is some of our businesses, their margins are so tight that when we have three or four down days, the one boom day you had, just you just broke even. And I know people don't get good service when they come to town because half of our restaurants don't have enough service to take care of people. There's also people wanting to hold on to what we've had. And there's some people coming into town. Okay. And the other thing about the summer and winter people, they were familiar strangers. You recognize them, you saw them, really, hey, you're back. We don't have familiar strangers anymore.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am. Your time's up.
How's it going, Packwood? Um yeah, I wish I could have made it up in person. Um we're up, we, my partner Joel and I own the uh the Packwood, the Packwood Mill Site. And um and and we're excited to be a a a big part of of the change in Packwood and 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 try to help alleviate some of the housing issues that that are just that are just prevalent and obvious for everybody. Um we're asking for uh some minor modifications to to the plan as it's drawn. Um our 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 submitted modifications would would reduce the C B Z down to twenty-seven point seven acres. Um we'd we'd be asking for ten acres of high density, sixty acres of medium density and thirty-five acres of low density. Um we think this will give us the tools we need to to do a master plan in there. Um and and provide not only workforce housing for uh park and ski resort employees, local employees, local residents. Um but also also be able to provide adequate density for for outside growth, vacation rentals and and such. So um we see ourselves as being, you know, a a a huge piece of the solution and uh and we feel that that more housing on our site is 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 congruent with that. Um and that's really, that's really all I have to 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 submit at this point.
Dave, can you please say your full name and your address?
Yeah, David Campos, uh six two one one Northeast two hundred and thirty-ninth Street, Battleground, Washington. And then um yeah, and then our then our Packwood site is the uh is the Packwood Lumber Mill.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom?
All right. Thank you, everybody, for speaking. Uh oral and written testimony is now closed on Packwood Subarea Plan and subject open for discussion among the commissioners. And it's a discussion rather than deliberation at this point, as a reminder. And so now is the time for commissioners to ask questions of the staff or other commissioners or to request additional information. It's also the time for commissioners to discuss potential changes to the plan based on what you heard here tonight or what you read. If any of the commissioners would like to discuss changes to the plan based on the testimony, bring it up now and that will help us move forward to a motion. Who'd like to start? Oh, Gretchen, great.
Hey, I wasn't intending to bring up the change, the suggested changes right off the bat. Um I have some other comments based on the testimony as well, but um I have, I I heard a little bit of language in the written testimony, a little bit in the um oral testimony, not nearly as much as I hear in my everyday life about the impact that short term rentals are having on this community. And I found it um to be a little um concerning and almost an oversight that it wasn't mentioned in the subarea plan, it's even mentioned. And I did read Amber's um response to that and the reasons why the committee came to that conclusion, but I my opinion, my personal opinion, is that the path for short term rentals are here of the entire county. I I don't think that short term rentals are a priority on a countywide level. I think it it needs to come from here. We need to be the initiator of the conversation and I realize this is not the place or time to offer regulatory anything. But simply defining them in our land use would be a great first start to even acknowledge them. They're not even in anywhere in any county document, like official land abuse document. There's plenty of language and regulations around transient housing, around bedding breakfast, around home based businesses. But right now, short term rentals are considered single family residences. And that is, I think that needs to really be distinguished and separated out because um I had a really good reason for that, but really dumb, but I I do think that it's skewing our, we have seventy percent of the homes here in Packwood are owned by people that don't live in them. Okay, so we're talking about a housing crisis, but we have seventy percent of the homes considered vacant here. So I'm thinking that there's got to be some kind of way that we can just sort of re out like shuffle things around a little bit. I'm not saying they go away. I I'm not interested in them going away. I'm interested in finding a balance in this community between housing for residents and housing for tourists. And a twenty-five seventy-five split is not it and we're feeling that. We're feeling, you know, inability for a family of my age and my income level to even not only rent here, but uh never buy here, never buy here. If I had to buy here today, I wouldn't, I would move along. I'd move down, I don't know where I'd be. But it's a problem. It's a problem. It's connected with the economy for sure. But I don't think we can ignore, I don't, I think it's, I think it would be an oversight to not even mention short term rentals in this plan. If I think about Packwood in the next twenty years and nothing is there to guide short term rental use or land use around vacation rentals, there's nothing in here to discourage it with all kinds of language to encourage the the tiny homes and the two flexes and the look of what they would look like. But there's nothing to encourage a balance and there's nothing to discourage the current trend of every single home being built, all of the building permits that are lined up at the door. Except they're not for people to build their forever home here. And I I I just feel like adding a goal or a policy in this language, I'm talking about everything that's here.
So Gretchen.
Feel a lot better about this plan.
Yeah, livable Packwood in your testimony offered a couple ideas that I'll bring up to see if this is where you're headed. Um they said, we would like to see a goal of preserving a portion of existing housing in Packwood for residents. They would also like to see a goal of creating new affordable hu- housing options that cannot be used as short term rentals. One option for you guys to consider, if if people agree that something should be said in the plan about short term rentals, is you could give me direction to draft a policy and some goals and bring those back to you to consider for inclusion in the plan. That would mean that we're not voting on the plan tonight because I'm gonna need a few days to draft that appropriately and I would like to hear other people's opinion about it too. So I thought with a good draft, but that is an option for you to consider. I would hesitate to write policies and goals on the fly. It's really hard to get them right. But I would be happy if this, if that is something that's important to the group, that I would bring those back to you and then you would be able to vote on those for inclusion. Mindy, would you summarize what you just, what what you would go to do?
Mindy, would you summarize what you did, what, what you would go to do?
So Says we're not writing regulations right now. That's phase two, as we said. So we're not gonna, you know, go into the code and define things yet. That'd be the next step. What, what I think I heard Gretchen say is she would like to see a policy and goals that is about Controlling, I think is the best word, controlling short-term rentals. And finding a balance between short-term rentals and long-term rentals in town. And I, there was one, um, Piece of testimony, the livable Packwood one That said, they had two suggestions around goals. One is preserving, preserving a portion of existing housing for residents, and the other goal was creating new affordable housing options that cannot be used as short-term rentals. So my, I guess my question back to you is if this is an important piece that is not in the plan, You could give me direction to go back and write a policy and goals that you would then consider. You could still edit them, obviously. Um, but we could add that it would mean That you would be voting on the plan March twenty-eighth, so not tonight.
Do you remember that rural housing, um, being that Eric Fratulans?
Yeah, liberal housing alternatives.
When I went back to look at that, there was a piece in there that said This is not to be used as short-term rentals because I have that question about what, what would stop somebody from taking advantage of that and renting it up nightly instead of what it intended to be. There's no language in the policy currently that would discourage that kind of If there was a triplex or fourplex created, who's to say that wouldn't be, there's nothing here to discourage that that I can tell, maybe.
Barb Russell, uh, Civil Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, I want to, um, give a little bit of background about short-term rentals and why there's a hole in regulation there. The state regulates transient accommodation and, um, but A site doesn't or a business Renting property don't, doesn't fall into that unless they have four or more units. So there's a couple of different ways we could approach that ultimately with regulation, but now we're talking policies. So some of the options would be things like saying That an area isn't eligible for rentals of durations less than thirty days or something like that. You can't ban landlords in that area, but you could ban essentially a transient population. Uh, you couldn't do it everywhere, but you could do a time, place, and manner type restriction on certain areas So that where, say, your densest residential is would be only for longer-term rentals and ownership. I think something needs to happen at the state level to change that definition. It's a widespread problem. It's on the state's Radar, it's on local radar. Everybody is hearing this. It's more critical in Packwood right now than it is in other places, but your pleas are heard. Um, so just as some ideas of where that could eventually go, right now, we're talking about guiding policies. Putting the values and the, the direction that you want this area to go As, as a collective group, there's a lot of community engagement here, not making up the rules themselves. So you, you need a policy to develop those rules in the future. We're not here to develop the rules now.
Great. So a meeting or two ago, I brought up that subject. Thank you. Um, you stated it much better than I did. Um, but My way of thinking was, is there a way that we can regulate Uh, these, these, um, Short-term rentals? And having an overall policy or goal in the plan would certainly, I think, be in order. I'd like to know if the committee that drafted the plan Actually had a chance to vet this and to, to really talk about it.
Would you like to call up Dennis and Kim?
I would.
Okay, Dennis and Kim, would you please come sit here over here?
I would also recommend that you think about the inverse of anything that you're looking at. So if you're looking at, say, Discouraging short-term rentals, are you really looking at discouraging short-term rentals or are you looking at encouraging Longer-term rentals? Because encouraging those longer-term rentals might be a more viable goal.
There's, there's always, there's always regulatory, um, Uh, effects That can be undesirable, which I wouldn't want to see. I don't wanna try to regulate our way out of every little nook and cranny here, but I, I think as an overall goal or policy within the plan To just, you know, maybe To, to confine it. I, I like the idea of confining it to an area because that's not You know, subjecting anybody to any special treatment or, 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 or any, um, Less favorable treatment. It is, it is an aspect of a, of a community within a community. Um, I know RVs, you know, parks have the same kinds of, you know, uh, Conditions, but I don't think those are regulated. Those are, you know, imposed by RV parks. Uh, some places have daily rentals only and some places have, you know, longer term. But, um, what was the, the?
I just wanted for the public, could I just introduce some to the
Sure, I'm sorry.
I can, for the public, no, like, oh, two people up. Um, at the end of our advisory committee work that we did, I asked if two people would represent the advisory committee in our discussions with, um, the planning commission. Kim and Devin volunteered to do that. So they've been at the past two planning commission workshops and then actually have given presentations for the commissioners To summarize the work that the advisory committee did. And so that's why I called them up here, just to let them know that we're the advisory committee there. Answer a few questions.
Thank you.
Um, good evening. My name's Dennis Reevee. I'm on with the Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, also a local resident here in Packwood. There was considerable discussion and, uh, throughout the entire year of our, uh, work project regarding short-term rental. Uh, I think, uh, And we all recognize the, the problems that we have now with the lack of affordable housing, lack of long-term housing And everything that you've heard about tonight. You've just heard everybody to a T, affordable housing, portable house. And short-term rentals are a key problem that would, needs to be addressed. I think that that's going to happen through regulatory means. But I told, I agree with Gretchen and Commissioner Corbin that, that, uh, A section regarding or a statement and policies regarding short-term housing, um, Would be apropos to put into the sub-area plan to give, to give direction and backing Or it's the subsequent regulatory, uh, things that will come out to, to govern. But, uh, I'm, so I'm in agreement and I think that the CAC would, uh, be happy to, we've been, you know, to rediscuss That opportunity to put a policy, an additional policy into the, into the plan.
I'll echo Dennis's concerns. Kim Pelosi, I'm a permanent resident of Packwood. I'm a land planner professionally. And I also have one permanent thing down here by choice. Knowing that wouldn't make us more money, but it would make one tiny little dent in the problem. And We recognize as the committee that the sub-area planning process isn't intended to be a twenty-year planning horizon. It is not Something to fix the right now problems. This is, we have to look twenty years in the future. What's Packwood gonna look like twenty years in the future? This is one step, just this plan is one step, and then after this, it's writing code. And that in itself is gonna take a couple of years. We know that the STR problem Is a right now problem. That is not something that we can wait three years or twenty years to address. This is something we have to look at or that has to be looked at now. And so we chose to not Include Mention of STRs in the code because we, it, it's, it's not a decision that our committee should be making. Nor offering recommendations on how to deal with it in twenty years. This is a policy change that has to be made at the board level and higher up. It's not something that we felt we really had any goodness in participating in, but I would think that just some language Speaking generally, the short-term rental would be good. That's not gonna offer any solutions for that, right? So whatever our problems are now, they are here. This is not going to solve This. I might not be here in twenty years. Gretchen might not be here in twenty years. Maybe we're retired in Mexico. Who knows? But this is not gonna help now. So we need to think about Solutions that would be That would have a much more quick turnaround. And this process is not the appropriate process for that. General language, looking in our crystal ball, yes, but not, this is exactly what needs to happen because This is not the method for that. And Barb alluded to, it's already in the works. It's on people's radar. That we all know, I mean, it's a hot button in Packwood.
And also, we do have, uh, Fisher Brothers here with us this evening. He is the district commissioner, so he's hearing what, what you're saying.
Uh, and the, the comp plan is being updated.
It is, I, you know, I think
So if we even add the word in the comp plan, that would just be a C, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very reasonable to put policy and goal language in here. You're right, the comp plan also is that then over the next couple of years. The comp plan will include updates to, to develop and regulations. So we'll spend one year on policies and goals, and then we'll spend a year on, on developing regulations. Uh, so that is another opportunity to speak to short-term rentals at a county level. It makes a good point. If, if the county wanted to do something now, that would be outside of both of those processes. That would be, need to be something that the board of county commissioners wanted to take up As a countywide topic, um, outside of these two, because these are, these are two-year Another two years before actual change.
I think it would be meaningful and powerful to To present to the commissioners what is important in Packwood, and I can't, I can't not mention that. No matter what, you know, I'm not expecting them to drop everything and pivot to that, but, um.
Yeah, I, I would agree it would have more, more impact too, to have it written in the plans. You know, we, we certainly have nothing to do with code or, or regulations. You know, but we're setting a, a tone and an, an ambition for what we want to see out here in Packwood. And then it would be up to the board of county commissioners to take this as part of their deliberations to, to regulate moving forward. I think you should, um,
But could you not Put a clause in your comp plan That says that, or in the, in this The plan that you're talking about. Can you put a clause in there that, uh, in the comprehensive plan, the issues of, you know, of your, uh, for the, that area would be addressed? And that, you, you, you some language in there to work on that.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend if you want, if you want, because As you know, the sub-area plan is part of the comp plan. We're adopting it as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So we'll be doing that piece first And then going into the rest of the comp plan. I think it is completely reasonable to consider A goal around short-term rentals and some policy language. Um, again, I, I heard from a couple of you that that's something that you want to do. I guess I would let The rest of you discuss that and decide if that's what you want. My ask would be then that you give me a couple of weeks to work on that And bring it back to you for a March twenty-eighth Look at it.
Yeah, I think, do you have any Moment, but I agree with what Mindy said. It should be in there because that will be the footprint For what comes about in the comp plan and future discussion. I think it's With, with you being in this area and knowing it better than any of us. Uh, you've got a beautiful community here and maybe if you would do that for us, I think that's a brilliant suggestion. And we would both, and I'm a twenty, that, for Mitch. Think though.
Jason, what's your, what's your thought?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I think it makes sense to at least Mention it. It's by far and away the most discussed topic. Um, so to not have it in there does seem a little crazy. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of that, for sure.
Bob?
Yeah, hey. Yeah, short-term rental is a big problem. I would like to see it handled in different ways. I've heard comments even made tonight about Taxes and different things, but I think it probably needs to be in the plan because there are comments in the plan Talking about the aesthetics of what we're trying to drive for in buildings. And I think it's realistic to probably have something about STRs at the same time. I have other questions when we, we spent a lot of time on SDR.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Gretchen's idea, but I think it needs to be very general. Like You know, I don't know exactly how you would word it, but whatever you said the first time, you seemed a little too definitive, uh, without Uh, you know, I just think there would have to be a lot of thought because obviously this is a difficult thing. You could create some consequences. Throwing everybody Everybody in the town into short-term rentals, except for some one little area that's long-term rentals Doesn't seem like
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa, because if people buying them for vacation rentals Probably aren't going to be specifically interested in one little area of towns.
I think what Barb is offering is a potential solution that you could talk about during phase two.
Yeah.
So I think you're completely right. If, you know, you guys have read the plan. The, the goals and policies are very, all of them, very high level, right? Their compass, we're headed that direction. Right? The, those specifics of how do we head there? What is it that we do to make it truthful, to make it happen? That's next step. So, But I appreciate that. Um, it sounds like there, I'll just wrap up, uh, STR discussion. So it's like, everybody would like A goal and some policies. So, um, give me about a week to draft something up. I will shoot it out to my advisory committee email and ask them to Quick turnaround, y'all. Throw it back at me with some thoughts and then, um, you won't have a full two weeks to review that though, if we're gonna do a March twenty-eighth, But it'll just be the one, you know, goal and, and Two, three policies underneath of it. So I will take that and do that. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, let's see, um, Bob, do you want to, do you have some questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Um, one of the, the gentleman brought up Issues around the airport, uh, And unless I'm wrong, I think he was pro the Packwood Subarea Plan. But had this discussion about the airport and the FAA protection and I will say for his, uh, benefit, I flew out at NAS Whittby Island for A number of years, so I've known Coopville What can happen. So I'm interested in what his issue is.
Yeah. I'll share back a little bit of what, because this was, and then I, I'll, again, I can open it up. We discussed this and, and Dave was on, um, the advisory committee, so we had the discussions. Um, Packwood is a small airport in a very small town that has residential development all around it. Residential development is not typically compatible with an airport, right? It's, there's noise and emissions and so forth. So if you were to, if you were to go into a, a green space that didn't have a town already there, put an airport in, you would give it a buffer and say, sorry, We're not putting anything there, but maybe industrial uses. Because you'd wanna push everything that would be bothered by the airport out and away from it. We don't have that luxury here. Because a, a lot of that development's already there. My Mari said I'm right at the end of the airport. She's right at the end of the airport, like literally The airport. So we don't have that luxury. Um, The advisory committee had thoughtful discussions about what to do with the Huntington property, Huntington Road property. They thought that the best option would be to have it be commercial Commercial business, uh, approach to that area. What Skylar brought up is, um, Prior to the mill owners proposing a change to their zoning, the mill was also commercial business, right? And in discussions with them, they had brought forward to the advisory committee that they would like to have more residential options there. And so we thought, well, what if we said in the discussion of Commercial, that you could have residential as well. Knowing that how you implement it doesn't mean residential shows up on every single lot. You can be very clear in designations to say Commercial business zone is allowed to have residential uses as long as it's three hundred feet from the airport. That's a rule you can write later. So it doesn't mean every commercial business district fits Residential. So that is how the advisory committee, as we closed it up, that is where they were hoping. Enter the new discussion that you heard from Dave Campos. They would like to change the zoning on the mill To just change a bunch of it to residential instead of it being commercial. So pull back the commercial to twenty-seven acres. I did share that with the advisory committee because we got a preview of that a couple of months ago, and the advisory committee was by and large very supportive of that change, just so you know, so they would welcome. Yeah.
That's a good answer. Thank you. So I guess where I'm going with that is Is he saying we're get, if we, if we adopt the Packwood Subarea Plan, We're gonna get too big a buildings near the airport that are gonna cause a problem?
No.
Is he worried about that?
No, because there's already an obstruction overlay for height. I think as you were about the use being residential. So people are literally living next to the airport with the noise. And as he was pointing out, maybe the first set of owners are fine with that, but the next set of owners may not be.
Right.
Right? And then, then they're, oh, yeah.
The overall issue is in The overall issue is increasing, it's not existing homes, it's increasing homes immediately adjacent to the airport. We adopted a strategy within laws dot which was do no more additional harm. So it, you know, harms already been done. We're not asking to change anything for existing homes, but when you add additional homes next to the airport, eventually that's gonna put pressure on the long-term viability of the airport.
Or they change the engines in the F eighteen and.
Yeah.
They landed our airport?
So that's the airport, but then Skylar had a question that was sort of with that other guy.
Yeah, so let me summarize that one. So that, that question was because there was this change to allow residential within the commercial business district as we came out of the Advisory Committee. Skylar's suggestion was to take that Huntington property back to a low-density residential, which would be about the density that STMU would allow today, which is about twelve thousand square foot lots. Um which is what could be allowed under today's zone. So his proposal was not commercial. Residential, low-density.
But doesn't that conflict?
That's what Dave is saying, so that, that would add homes close to the airport, which would be reflective.
Right, right.
Right, so you have.
It's saying the commercial is a better fit.
Commercial would be a better fit from the airports, from the transportation standpoint. So this, this is where we run into these, these rubs.
But how long's the, how long's runway, two thousand feet?
I don't remember.
I just, you know, that runway won't be there. The first airplane that goes through that house at the end of the.
And this, this property's not, and it is not, it's adjacent. It's not front or back of the, it's adjacent. So you're talking about noise primarily is the, is the main concern when you have residential close to.
There is a safety concern. You know, the actual runway, a compromise that we also discussed was we put language in that it was there in perpetuity that landowners understand that they're moving into a home that is adjacent to an airport and they're going to be subject to noise, emissions, et cetera.
Yeah, we already have that kind of language for agricultural uh uses. So anyway, so this is before you, you kind of have three different. Let me, let me outline your, kind of your approaches you could take here. Um. One, you could leave it commercial business district as it is proposed right now. Do nothing else with it. Two would be to take it to the residential low-density, which is what is allowed today, essentially twelve thousand square foot lots. Uh residential lots. Because the mill site has pulled back so much of that CDZ zone to make it residential. If, if you were to approve that, you could strike the residential out of the commercial business district language. So page eighteen, I know Dennis said it right in front of me. The eighteen or nineteen that had the description of what it was. Or the move down. How do we add some of these? Yeah. Okay, page twenty-one, does anybody need a plan? We can grab some copies.
Yeah, I don't think he needs.
Yeah. Okay, so the page twenty-one. Uh there's the descriptions. These are general descriptions. CBZ says the focus of these areas is commercial offspace, small-scale manufacturing, larger-scale commercial one thousand or ten thousand to twenty thousand square feet should be located here. High-density residential uses eighty to thirty units per acre should be allowed and buffered from commercial and manufacturing uses. So again, you could just leave it as it is. Knowing that in Phase Two, we have the opportunity to write regulations around residential. You could strike that high-density residential should be allowed. Because that was really put in by the Advisory Committee to acknowledge what the mill was looking at doing, but the mill has a different proposal now in front of you. You could take it to the residential low-density as Skylar has requested, which is similar to the density allowed under STMU, which is the current zone.
Does that allow uh commercial then?
Uh no, it would allow home-based business only.
Because I thought originally when we started discussing this, you, you said that the uh sewer was going to go down to fire all right here or something?
About, about to Huntington Road?
About there and then, and then any businesses that didn't fit into the uh mold of downtown Packwood size-wise would be placed there. I think you said like if I'm right, it was coming in or something.
Right, that would go in the CBZ zone. That was the intention of the commercial business district zone.
Okay.
Was to put larger-scale commercial away from the downtown core.
And then, and then they would bring the sewer to them.
Yes, they would. That's right.
And so if you had the, if you made it so that it's just homes. Uh who's gonna put the sewer or are they going?
At twelve thousand, at twelve thousand square feet, you could, and it's in the water district, you could use septic.
Okay, so you're.
And that would be what you would do today under STMU.
Okay. And so then there'd be homes there and then homes across the street from the mill, right?
Well, look at, look at the design that they've proposed for the mill sites. The homes are pushed behind the commercial, the commercials near Highway twelve. What was it, twenty-one? I know the pink, the, the pink, yellow, blue in your new testimony is the mill proposal. So in your new testimony that I gave you tonight is the one that's got yellow, pink, and blue. And that's the mill's request.
Oh, the new testimony. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the new, the new segment. Does everybody find me where I'm at? I got so many things.
Okay, so I can't see the writing. So the yellow is.
Oh, let me, I'll, I'll quote up and I'll read it to you just a sec. I've got it here in front of me somewhere. I now have mine. Okay. So the yellow is this, is what the CBZ would be. So keep in mind, in the proposal in the, in the plan, the, this is all CBZ.
Okay.
Okay, so what um Dave Campos testified to is to shrink the CBZ zone to twenty-seven point seven acres, the yellow.
Okay.
And then have high-density residential in the blue.
Yeah.
Medium-density in the pink. And then the low-density as you go away from that development.
Okay.
So this proposal would take away the need in the land use description for that allowance for residential in the CBZ if you approve this change. To get their requesting to the designations, because, because then the housing is just in the housing designation.
Are we really being asked to look at every line of where the zoning is and every year disagreement? That and then the difference not gonna even be implemented until Phase Two, correct?
Yeah, you, you are absolutely, you are absolutely being asked to look at the map on page twenty-two and the exact lines of the future land use designation. Because that is what we will write the regulations to. So even though those don't go into effect, the minute this, this gets adopted, the regulations that take two years to write will be written based on this. So where these lines are matter a lot. So yeah, this is really important.
Has the Advisory Committee benefited this?
They have. So this was, this was something that you guys got uh two months ago. This was previewed by uh Dave, shared it with us early. I sent it out to the Advisory Committee, asked for their response. By and large, everyone was supportive. There were some different opinions about how much commercial should be here. Um but by and large, everyone supported the additional high-density, medium-density residential approach to this.
And for clarity, that entire area that he's suggesting those lines for, he owns, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, correct. This is all the mill's property.
So it's their own property they're suggesting these lines for?
Wh- what questions would we, would we want to ask about that? Like, what do, what does it matter to me that it's sixty acres or fifty acres in pink? Like. No, I think, you know, what, what is the question we should ask or what is something we should be considering, like twenty-seven acres per CBZ, is that is that uh too much for the, for the sewer? Is it too much for the city?
The sewer, yeah, so try not to worry too much about the sewer, because they're just, they're just starting engineering now, and they are discussing engineering for expansion.
Okay.
So assume that, assume a sewer is gonna be fine, and we're not gonna worry about it.
But they're thinking that's the closest to the system, so it, you know, it's gonna be the cheapest to.
The, the commercial being close to Highway twelve was a theme that reoccurred with the Advisory Committee constantly.
But it's also closer to your downtown.
It, it is, yeah.
Okay.
But there was that.
The blue and the pink and the green, they may not even have to be on sewer ever.
The blue would have to be at high-density residential, but the pink and the, and the green would not need to be necessary.
So they put the blue close to the yellow because then they.
It's a transition.
It's gonna need sewer.
Well, and it's, and it's a transition. Remember how we talked about the, the bullseye effect? Right? So you can go high-density development, medium-density development, low-density. This is that bullseye. High against downtown, right? High, medium, low. It's a buffering and, and moving out of density, so it goes down.
Do we need to make a motion and to adopt this or to make this change?
Yeah, well, we're not, you know.
When we're ready.
If, if this is something that you want to propose, when you make your motion, your motion would read something like this. I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the Packwood Subarea Plan with the following changes.
Okay.
And then you would run through whatever those, and it sounds like one will be adding a short-term rental policy, goal and policies. And this could be another one. The, the Huntington property can be another one.
Is it my turn? I don't want to.
Did you, do you have anything to say about? I don't know what to say about this, honestly.
Well, I'm. I'm. I think we acknowledged the short-term rentals. And I think the, we have something in place, at least, so I was told that the committee that's here likes this and the owner that was on the phone likes it. So I'm there, but I got one more thing I gotta figure out is this, right?
Yeah.
What Mr. Skylar's got going here.
Yeah, so Mindy said that um, you know, there might be concerns about future landowners buying back from airport. Well, they know their work.
Thank you.
It's not a brand-new thing that's proposed. Like, the airport was there before Skylar acquired the property. It's there during, and it's still gonna be there afterward. So it, it shouldn't be a shock to someone that, oh my, there's an airport.
Let me tell you how much.
And also, as many people say that they're. When you're adjacent to areas of long-term agriculture, or like in Thurston County, there, if you have a piece of property that's into long-term ag, uh mining, forensics, any sort of large-scale operation, those owners all received notice on their title that said you are adjacent to an area of long-term forestry, and you will be experiencing noise or these types of activities. So it's not a shock. Anyone who does a title report, but when they buy their property, they're going to be aware. And so I think that what David mentioned about having, having some additional conditions might be beneficial, just as part of the plan, where it's, if like, if there's somebody in the property just saying FYI.
Let me bring this back, Mindy.
Next step, though.
There were about three acronyms that Skylar used when he was talking about CDs, CACs, CMZs. I just wondered, what is he asking for?
Yeah.
And I want, and I wanted to go to you, not.
I'll reiterate. So.
Want to make him happy if we can make.
The Huntington property. Um and it's, again, there's a map in here. This is the Huntington property.
Yeah.
It's in your testimony. Just so you know what property we're talking about. Huntington Road property. The current recommendation is the commercial business district, the CBZ zone, which is, which.
Or you.
Yeah, so it, and it's it's this property and it includes like the airport and it comes across and includes the mill on the other side.
And that's the, what this group is presenting to us is to take it that way.
That's, that's what's in your plan.
Right.
Skylar has asked
Yeah.
that this triangle piece of property be changed from CBZ to the um, the residential low, the RL in, in your thing, which would be the same as the green on this property.
Let me ask, how many lots is at an acre on that green?
It's, it's uh about four lots per acre. It's about twelve thousand. It's a little less than that. It's about twelve thousand square.
No septic, so you're planning on building those?
No.
No, excuse me, septic only, no.
At twelve thousand, it could be done on septic. So that is what he's asking in his rationale that he stated is that that is similar to what would be allowed today in the STMU zone without sewer, is you could get roughly twelve thousand square foot lots in there. So he's asking for a status quo on the residential allowance on that property.
I'm trying to orient, I'm trying to orient across the highway from where the mill is compared to where. Can I just come?
There's gonna be a lot, huge reductions in the yellow.
No, that's, no, not enough.
Yeah.
For a large scale.
Going to demonstrate, okay. Are you ready?
Yes.
Orientation?
Yes.
This is the mill site, right here. Okay? So you know, we're, you know, we're at here, Mill Site.
Yep.
So, and then this is the airport. This triangle right here is the Huntington Road property. Okay? So this property, the request is to keep the commercial up here. Right? And then high, medium, low residential. Skylar's request on this one is to do the pink in that triangle.
The gray, the gray would stay there.
See, the commercial business district. Yeah, so that's his request. That make sense? Everybody wanted to.
I have another question, Mindy. Maybe somebody else have a question first.
No, I know, it's just. Well, I thought, I was curious if if the group that had a chance to review this and what their.
They had discussed this, yeah, this is. Yeah, this was discussed before by the Advisory Committee. Um and their discussions was to keep it in a commercial use because it is less um impactful, close to the airport. So they didn't, they didn't propose a change when we were bringing it out of the Advisory Committee. That doesn't mean that you can't
Yeah.
have this discussion, make a change.
Well, can we do a, I forget what you call it, a straw?
Straw pole?
I would like everybody's opinion on whether they think that it would be a problem to build houses by that airport runway. Just, just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem. I mean, if it's gonna be commercial buildings or residential buildings, and the people moving into those buildings are I mean, that's up to them. Um I guess I'm not really sure what the big downside is. There's gonna be people in a many way. Uh either way, if they build commercial or residential, so I guess I don't really
Gretchen.
understand what the problem is.
I am a little unclear too about um like as the gray exists now, you are allowed high-density residential uses. So you would not like, you want bigger lot sizes.
Well, all I, all I'm asking is, okay, what do you, do you think there's any reason we wouldn't allow homes to be built by the rent?
They're already there.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Well, I think it needs to be minimal, anything, because like he, he mentioned, this future, future, in the future, people do have a tendency to come in and they say, oh, that's gotta be that, we don't need that airport, that airport sheen here. It's, it's too much noise. And people do that.
Yeah.
They do that at all the time. They move there and then they want to.
Yeah, but if we have language, it it's, but they can't do that, like we do with agricultural.
Right, that, that would be, that'd be a phase two, and I think that's excellent, excellent step two that we should take is, is that you have to sign a, I agree, I'm moving next to this thing, because there are existing houses around the airport already. I think the, the I feel like you're narrowing down to sort of two options.
Well, I was just wondering whether it, you know, but
Yeah.
whe- whether we really feel that having homes by the runway. There, there may be some issues, but do we feel they're insurmountable enough to where we only can allow commercial there? And because basically the whole town of Packwood by the, by the airport.
Yeah, I, I don't see any, any problem with it. Uh if somebody moves to the area and they want to buy a house near the airport, or they would like to build a house near the. Or they would like to build a house near the airport. I don't think that we should be telling people what they can and can't do with their property. Any more than we absolutely need to. I've lived in a small town of six hundred, I'm sorry. The town that I lived at that had an airport like this was a thousand people. Uh, and town was two miles long and a half mile wide. Very compact and we had houses around the airport and it wasn't a problem. And people enjoyed having that. Activity to watch and um, you know, it was a small airport like this. It's not like we've got Boeing seven forty sevens landing here normally ever. You know, but small commercial.
Could be a, it could be a sale pitch for your house. You're like, you live right on the runway.
Door doors. Fisher Stanford took me to an airport, is it the one in Morton? And showed me that there are people that live right by it that have their own hangars.
Okay, Bob, what's your, what's your big goal?
Why wouldn't, why didn't the CAC? Why is it still like this?
Well, I hear them and it's still correct. I I would, I will get back to that, but let's hear, okay, let's hear.
I was next to the airport?
No issue. And and I really don't have any issues. So if we don't really have an issue on that. Then we can remove that and go to uh discuss maybe what's on Gretchen's mind like. Well, we we would allow houses, but maybe we prefer commercial for some reason. So is there a reason that we would prefer commercial or that the advisory committee said, huh, we kinda like the commercial there?
Because of the density.
Yeah, residential use there. Can't ask if you'd like them to respond in the discussions they have.
Do you have something that you remember on that, that why you thought you would rather prefer to leave it commercials?
Well, there is a residential component.
Right.
In it, it's quite high in density compared to existing STMU allowances.
So in that department houses or.
Right, but when you get in near an airport, there are hyper restrictions. Not like super high density. But normally, commercial and more intense residential development sort of goes hand in hand. So um, I believe that that's was kind of our thinking. If we're gonna propose a commercial zone there. Because there's already commercial zones in the area just across from it, then. If if we're gonna stick in more residential because we know there is, there's towns in the future, it should be. In the area and it should be more dense, but without making it.
So that's the main issues that you'd like there to be higher density than what he's proposing.
That was what was here. But we also didn't want it to be STMU because we're changing all the.
And I felt, I feel like that high density discussion was really more focused towards the mill site and less towards this particular property. I don't think that this property had an in-depth conversation with the advisory committee. There was just a nod to the fact that it would be more appropriate to put commercial by an airport than residential. And then there was a lot of discussion about allowing more residential at the mill site. So I guess what I'm trying to offer to you is that you're not gonna get a huge amount of direction from the advisory committee on the Huntington Road site. Cause that didn't have as much in-depth conversation. I think it's up to you guys to decide what do you want to do with that property.
Proposed more housing. Plans, so that would remove some of the need for the housing here, but then. Housing is such a great need, both sides could certainly stand to have.
Mindy, if this plan is adopted in any form, what, when do the zoning designations take effect?
Um, so the actual, I mean, the designations themselves take effect, but there's no regulation behind them. It will take us to the end of. Well, mid twenty twenty five to write the regulations that actually.
So, prior to that, if someone were to submit a complete. Permit application, their rights would vest under the previous zoning?
That anybody who vests over the next two years will vest under the current zoning as it stands today, they're gonna vest under STMU on that property.
So keep in mind, a current owner of property, if they had a particular use in mind with, under the current zoning, they still have some opportunity to. Do that prior to the changes taking effect as well. It's not a huge window, but it's not taking effect today.
Is that a window that you think it can be?
If, so here's, so here's, so here's my opinion to you guys about that. So Jason, what I would say is, if you, if your suggestion is best before the zoning changes, then you should not designate it this. You're saying.
Right.
We think it should be residential and not.
I'm, I'm fully for that, so. Yeah, or just changing it. But the the other, the other thing that I wanted to to ask was if we're going to be adding some things anyway. Is there any reason why they, the committee wouldn't have a chance to discuss this particular property further and then get.
The more you, the more, yeah, it's the more you. Yeah, the more you wanna have them take a look at, the more time I'm gonna need with that. If we're gonna have a number of issues and I wanna get them together for a meeting, so now we're gonna, we're gonna push that out at least a month before you guys take this back up. That's fine. This is your timeline, not mine. I'm just letting you know. I think I can flow goal and policy language quickly by him and get some quick turnaround, but if you want us to do a number of issues, then you're gonna need to give me a month.
Jason, would you, would you feel comfortable just uh uh having Mindy draw a proposed map? And and then us waiting on it because we're gonna be doing that anyway. Because of the other thing.
Yeah, I don't have any problem.
You know, a new map of how it would look if we were to change it the way that they want and then just kinda give you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the pushback would actually be.
Yeah, I think the main pushback that you're gonna hear is gonna be what David said. That.
Really just about.
You're adding.
Later, not wanting the airport at all.
And then making a stink about it later, as Kathy was saying.
Which, just anecdotally, they will do, right? As somebody that, as somebody that talks to people that wanna develop their property. I get complaints about pigs and cows and sheep too close to, too close to me that have been there for decades, right?
There's nothing that's gonna be done.
Well, they'll do it even if we put it.
Way it is.
I wonder how many more individual property owners who they realize how they've been. Drawn here, maybe the word hasn't got to them yet, but do you anticipate?
So I'm actually really surprised, there's one property owner that I'm surprised did not submit testimony. Because she had asked the advisory committee for a change in designation. The advisory committee did discuss that one in depth, did not agree with it. I told her that she could come back and ask the county commissioners. She is on our mailing list. I'm surprised that she did not testify asking for that, but she didn't. So either she doesn't care anymore. Or she's gonna wait and talk to Board of County Commissioners. We have had other requests that we have discussed during and made changes. So I I would hope that at this point, what you're seeing are the people who are left who still want changes. Because a lot did come to the advisory committee and a lot of changes were made. We had open houses, people discuss things at those open houses, so. Um, I feel like we tried to hit a lot of requests. It doesn't mean that somebody won't wake up. Two months ago, oh no, and wanna come. That's why we have another step. Board of County Commissioners is a final step.
There was a, there was a testimony in here by um, somebody that lives in this high density downtown. That did not wish he designated. Very nice, large lot downtown, he doesn't want to be that go away. So I don't know, it seems, at this point in the game, it seems a little early to be making this kind of.
This is, this is when we make these decisions. The resident regulations unless we make these decisions.
Remember, they, the the rules apply to new things put in. It's not like we're gonna go in and tear down somebody's existing home.
That's absolutely right. This is all about new. If you're in a place and you got a single family home on a quarter acre lot and we zone it and don't allow single family homes anymore there, that's fine. They say they can maintain, they can replace.
Somebody can ask to have a rezon done potentially.
Well, not in this case, because you'll you'll create, you'll create spot zoning. So that spot zoning rule that we discussed when we were talking about all the rezones applies across the board. You cannot create like a lot that's different from the lots around it, right? So um.
There's a pink right there.
There is.
And that would not.
It does not fall into spot zoning.
What? I like one and four, but I like one and six or one and eight better. Uh, what happens when technology comes in, sewer line gets out there? And we're already telling them they can only do quarter acre lots. What if you hit the lottery and the sewer went down there? How would you change that? To make it so that he could put more houses per acre?
That'd be a comprehensive plan and change.
So what we say here, four houses per acre.
We can change the comp plan. The comp plan can be changed on a yearly basis. People can make those requests and they come before you. But when we do that, we do it based on the goals and policies that have been adopted. So it's a, it's a conversation of is this an appropriate change under the umbrella? Of the comprehensive plan. So it is not, it's not that you can't make changes later.
But if, so in my theory, if the sewer line showed up. And we wanted to discuss that as a community to change the comp plan to allow.
If it would remain CBZ, does it have to have the sewer to build then?
No, no, we have commercial without.
They could still use a septic.
Yes.
Okay. If it's all homes, they can use it, they can build tomorrow theoretically, they can.
Under STMU, they can build.
Correct, correct. And and if you put it into a uh uh classification that it's all. You know, that it's what was the classification that's gathered with one.
The residential low.
Residential low, he can build. Then with septic.
Just like the STM. He's just protected going forward.
For somebody that wants to build something there, they don't have to wait for the sewer.
They don't need to wait for sewer. They can build today under STMU.
Can I ask, so the last clarifying question. So his concern is really. Us changing it on him because he has a plan moving forward now.
I would assume so.
Since I've said a lot today, guys, and I know that um, you listen to me maybe more than you ought to listen to your lawyer. Uh, I want to make very clear that I don't see a legal problem with any of the options that are in front of you now. So the questions that I'm asking are just to. Open up more information that I think would help you make decisions.
So I think what I heard here, it just to wrap this up, is you guys would like to see a map that shows the requested changes, including the mill. And Skylar's property to see what it would look like with their requested changes. So you can take a look at that. So I will bring that back to you guys along with the goal and policies for us, for the short term rental. If you don't mind, I'd like to come back to the language in here with the high density residential. And this is not so many given testimony, but this is something that is important. Uh, page twenty one of the plan, the CBZ language. And Gretchen, you just, you brought it up. And so I wanna re-touch on this. So, and Skylar brought it up. He said between the first time it said commercial business and the time that he saw it next. It added this high density residential uses should be allowed at eighteen to thirty. So let me reiterate why that was added and why I would now suggest you take it out. It was added back when we showed the whole mill site that you see on there as gray, as commercial business district. And they had asked for a residential allowance on that property. Fast forward to today, they're just now asking to change the designations to residential. They no longer would need. That, okay?
And that's the next you?
CBZ. Commercial business district.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'd be eighteen to thirty, okay, go.
So I would now recommend that you consider taking that out.
Can I just ask one question to Skylar then?
Yes.
Why is that not a benefit to you? Uh, seems like eighteen to thirty allows you to do something good there if you wanted to.
Yes, it does seem like that. One is that would require sewer to be extended. And um, it would delay our development times out in this in the future, which is not ideal. Um, and.
Thank you, listener.
Okay, so then, 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 this would not be called CBZ.
Yes, it would.
That part would.
We just strike the whole base.
So if you, if you are going to do this, if this is something you're leaning towards doing. Then I would suggest striking the line in the CBZ that says high density residential use units. Should be allowed and buffered, just strike that sentence. Because you're allowing significantly more housing already. At the mill site by changing their designations.
So then you wouldn't be able to do housing at all.
If it were, if we're to say CBZ, there'd be no residential there at all. Okay, making sense? So, so far my, my homework is a goal of policies on short term rentals and a map. That shows these changes. And the striking language, I can bring that up with the. Other things?
Okay, okay, now, now I'd like to ask the question of the board again. If if we were to change the. Uh, designation for Huntington Road. And add the language, the general language on short term rentals.
And.
And.
The development and the.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, if we did those three things. Uh, starting with Kathy down there, what's your, what's your opinion of voting yes or no for the February?
I would vote yes more like once changes.
Gretchen? I'm still unfair about the Huntington and the mill stuff, but um, yeah, if we could look at that again and make some changes.
Yeah.
The fact that the committee's already vetted these ideas, I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor.
I think we generally are in favor with seeing what we got.
Were there any questions? You didn't mention in that the line in the CMZ description, were you considering?
Oh, oh, yeah.
About it. I mean, we're not making decisions yet, so, yeah. Were there other questions or things that came up in testimony that you wanted to discuss?
Uh, yes, so this is that discussion point where we get to say what we want, isn't it?
And this is, I, I mean, this is the time to talk about you want changes, basically what you heard.
I think we, we know we're going there, but I guess generally speaking, I was. I was a little taken and pleasantly surprised by how many. Uh, people who've lived here a long, long time and are vested, Mari and. Uh, John, the septic installer and Greg. Uh, very important. I appreciate you coming out and cause it was important for me to hear. Hear that. I didn't hear the opposition tonight. I expected to hear some opposition. That's why I wanted to really.
I will promise you that there is opposition out there. And most of it, most of it really is because there's just a lot of development happening and it doesn't feel good. And there's a lot of requests to just figure out how to stop it.
So I wrote three things down that um, and I would like to say, I think, since the commissioner's here. I think in terms of on big decisions, uh, are critical areas being protected? Anything being presented to me that I don't like in terms of critical areas? I wanna know if property rights, all people's property rights, the new ones, the old ones. All of those are being protected. And that's where I have a little comment on the STR thing, cause it's, that's a tough one. And the third thing I think about is what's good for Lewis County. I, I understand there are. Microcosms of everything that people get upset about, but. As I've said to the committee before, there's eighty thousand people in Lewis County and I really recognize the fact that Packwood's got an idea here, but. I would also like to think about the whole Lewis County at the same time.
So just a quick thing, uh, critical areas stay exactly the same as our rules are now, so all of them apply. Packwood is surrounded and through it, with critical areas. Um, so when we get to step two, we're gonna do length pass the analysis that we'll be bringing to you and we subtracting out those. So you'll get to start to see what this will look like down the road. That's in phase two. Um, so I just wanna make sure you know we're not doing anything to damage that piece of it.
And some of the, some of the, we, the committee deliberately left out properties that were in areas like shoreline, floodway. CMZ, wetlands, you know, all of that stuff. They kinda, they let those things out because they knew we couldn't develop at these densities there.
I used to have a real problem with the. I used to have a real problem with the traffic issue, because I was concerned on that eighty thousand person, you know, Lewis County. Am I letting the locals decide to wreck the traffic pattern for the rest of the state, right? But I will have to say that, uh, Highway twelve westbound from I five, if anybody's been on it recently, Rochester is putting in a bunch of roundabouts and.
That's right back there. The Rochester plan is the top one on there.
It's really impressive and is helpful when trying to think about what might happen down the road. I think smart people will have smart solutions.
Yeah, Rochester is coming up. That's why I, I put it back there, because Rochester is right away from Highway twelve is a hundred feet. And this right away is a hundred feet, so it gives you a good idea of what's possible.
Uh, somebody mentioned that they weren't, uh, nuts about the idea of putting all the people in the town rather than kind of expanding it out a little bit. Um. What, what did the committee feel? Did the committee feel, talk about that and feel that that was going to kind of change the flavor of your, like, maybe it would be better to move them out of town than down south of the neighborhood.
Well, who are, who are the people we're talking about?
Me.
If we're talking about, uh, you know, uh, our local residents and, uh, the, uh, the new housing and the new, you know, growth for the locals, then, uh, we may decided that it's most important to keep it centralized again. Uh, the, the target theory, you, you, you have your higher density next to your commercial and you, you, you go out and out and out with lower and lower density. And it was critical to the committee to, uh, retain our rural character and to keep our wide open spaces and keep our forests. And so the concentration of, uh, housing and stuff is even towards right in the heart of town.
I'll also offer that multifamily housing cannot happen without sewer. It's not possible. The only place you can have multifamily housing is where the sewer is going to go. The other thing I want to say is the idea behind the, the multifamily housing in downtown is not apartment complexes. It's mixed use. Round four commercial, second story residential, two stories only. And I want to say something about the transportation piece. The further you move the people who work in those businesses away, the more they have to drive. If they are located literally upstairs from their job, they're not driving, they're walking.
And this also provides people who don't have you know, reliable transportation or no transportation, the ability to walk to the workplace or sort of this library, doctor's office, which is hotly working for.
Yeah, transit oriented development, the idea that, that you put high density development near where people walk to and where they get on a bus stop is a very basic appropriate planning tenant. Right? You know, the, so here's, here's the judge for the fifth position. If, if this town needs affordable housing, we have to look at multifamily. Multifamily can only go where sewer can go.
Is the person that made that, that she was.
If we bring additional testimonies and we run a foul of appearance of fairness. We, we can correct questions. If you have a specific question for her, then you can certainly ask it. But allowing additional comments can get you into some trouble.
I wanted to address something Bob had asked at a previous meeting workshop about the density, about unintended consequences.
Uh-oh, what did I say?
Do you want to ask a question about other test?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. What did I mean?
Well, you wanted to know what the unintended consequences of any of this might be. And I wish I would have said it in my testimony, but one of the things that really seemed up here is that the unintended consequence of high density residential in the downtown area would be not affordable housing, which is what everybody hopes for with multifamily housing, but high end condos.
Which we can avoid with an S T R piece.
Great.
When you decide.
If you decide to go that route, which it felt like you guys were strongly opinioned towards going that.
Well, S T R is high property, right? High property costs. And condos are different things. Those are two different issues.
Yeah.
I could buy the condo for a million dollars and never rent it out.
Yeah.
She's saying it's, the unintended consequence might be that things downtown are more expensive than people think.
They certainly can't be without regulation. It's going to be very important to use our policies that we've written in here about the affordable pieces to write regulations to drive that. And we can.
Oh, yeah, we can. I just think, yeah, I go back to my property rights thing.
Yeah, so you guys are gonna really have, you're gonna struggle in phase two with trying to decide property rights versus how much do we need affordable housing? Because of the, the market is unlikely to create housing that's affordable for the people who live and work there. Right? The market will not create that by itself. If that is something that needs to happen, as many of the policies say, as what you have heard here, regulation will be required to make that happen.
I want to be very clear that as the government, we cannot go in and say, nobody's gonna build short term rentals. We can't ban a certain type of construction.
The only industry they have there.
Well, so what I'm getting at is you could have, say, a particular zoning designation that has some limitations on that. Either, there, there's different ways you can do it, but it would be what's called a time, place and manner restriction. So they can only do this in a certain place, in a certain way. Or they can't do it in a particular place in a particular way. More likely, they can't do it in a particular place in a particular way. You can't make them all go away. And nobody really probably wants to.
So phase two is gonna be right on your issue, Bob. Right on that property rights versus trying to get what, what the plan is asking for.
Let me ask, since we're in this discussion. So I've always, on this whole time, I've been thinking, chicken or the egg? Is it the sewer that's gonna drive this whole thing? Or is it this plan that's gonna drive this whole thing? And I guess, I don't know if this to be a fact, but I would think capitalism, if you put a sewer in, it would all happen right there where that sewer was. You're gonna get density, businesses, all the kinds of things you're thinking about capitalism.
Right, so that first, that first statement I made about take home messages, the plan does not drive growth.
Right.
The plan manages the growth.
Yeah.
That's what this plan is about. It's not driving it, because you're absolutely right. Sewer is gonna drive that development in downtown.
But I guess where I'm, and this is conversation point where I get to just say what I'm thinking here, is I'm okay with letting people decide you know, that this is what they want to do, but then when you come back at me and say and regulations and, and restricting people's rights, maybe that'll be a little bit, it'll be interesting to see what.
Somebody mentioned local ownership that basically, you know, a lot of people live out of, from out of the area. That own the homes here. Does this plan, was it ever discussed that this would in any way change that?
It would be unconstitutional.
Yeah, we can't, we can't actually, we cannot.
They feel like, okay, there would be more families that would live here full time and work.
The policies. Yeah, the policies, the policies talk to doing things like partnering with Economic Alliance and the East, the Jer, um, the College and actually working on recruiting small business into the area, work on education of people about how to do startups. There's a whole bunch of like proactive goals and policies, and keep that in mind when you're looking at this. We're talking a lot about land use, because that's your guys' wheelhouse, right? Like this is, that lives in your wheelhouse. But a lot of the plan is not about that. It's about proactive other steps you take to get these other pieces in. Because you can't regulate who buys a piece of property, right?
No, 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 I just.
So, yeah. Then I know, yeah.
Maybe you're thinking, well, you know, we're gonna do all these, you know, uh, houses that are going to be more affordable. People might want to come and live here because maybe there's something to do.
Absolutely, and there's actually looked through the economic development. There's three goals, about twenty policies around economic development. There's two goals on community, about ten policies related to community, and a lot of that is not regulatory pieces.
Yeah, the, the advisory committee felt that if the general framework of the sub area plan was met, that this would be a place where families could start, start to grow. And so you could have families live here, you could have generational type, um, families that live here, because it would allow them to age in place and things like that.
A lot of stuff about business, growing business, growing small business, passing them down through generations.
Because you think a family is gonna be able to afford one of these houses that is gonna go in one of these places?
More that they would have a, they would have the resources available potentially to have a, have a family in, in Packwood that is more attainable for more people. Because you can have families in Packwood, there, you have to have certain sacrifices.
Okay. Any more discussion? Right?
Uh, Mr. Arco, I believe this is his name, Greg mentioned something about taxes being more than his mortgage and that tax breaks needed to be talked about procedures and others. Uh, unfortunately, this is not the forum to do that. But there is a county commissioner here that you could probably talk about for the lowest county portion. And then you'd have to contact state, uh, representatives for anything beyond that, but you know, we're, we're, we're all concerned about taxes, but this isn't a place where we can really discuss it. So, but thanks for bringing it up.
All right, it doesn't sound like we're ready to make a decision tonight, because we've got a few things we need to tidy up. Uh, can I get a motion to recess and continue on March twenty eighth?
Some moved.
Second?
As I think.
Kathy? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. More work for Mindy, sorry.
Not really adjourned yet.
Oh, we're not?
We'll let people.
Oh, yeah, yeah, never mind. That closed the, uh, Siberia plan. Is there anything for the good of the order from staff?
Okay, so March twenty eighth, we're gonna have a continuation of the hearing, this hearing, so you're gonna get some new things from me in about a week. Um, we're also going to come back to, um, population and housing stuff again. So I'm meeting with the plant growth committee tomorrow. I think we're gonna be really close to population allocations after tomorrow and probably have a first sweep at housing. So we'll get that out to you guys too, to discuss on that meeting. So it's gonna, that's gonna be a pretty technical meeting. A pretty technical meeting that we're having, so that's what we got, um. Just want to make sure you guys knew what was coming.
I knew there was something I was.
The commission for the good of the order?
Great meeting.
I will be out of town on the twenty eighth, but I'll try to call in, because I really want to vote.
Are we going to have it back here?
No, no, we'll do it.
I can't remember what I talked to you about this morning. That this morning or yesterday?
You asked me about, uh, Skylar's property, which we discussed.
Okay, so the next meeting will be on March twenty eighth and, uh.
Yep.
I have some questions.
Oh, yep.
No, not when, not during this process, because we're considering all the properties. It's not a reason. Yeah, but it's, if it's not, it falls under legislative. I know it's weird, but no, it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's got pretty confusing.
You guys have a lot to think about when you drive home, except for Gretchen, her home's really close. Everyone else has a lot to think about.
Carpool with me. Last time I said, I'll drive from the courthouse and nobody.
One, so.
I forgot about it, I could have got like hours of legal advice.
It's not legal advice you want. It'd be rants about things like professionalism and.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
And those will be adjourned with me?
Excellent, we're adjourned.